I'd like to call this regular city council meeting to order. If you would all please rise and join us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and equal with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Cheryl, would you like to do a roll call please? Present. 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 Present.
Present.
Present.
Present.
Present.
Present.
Okay, next up, we have approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember DeYoung to approve the agenda, seconded by Councilmember Carnegie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Do we have any discussion on the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I've moved the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember DeYoung to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Today, we do not have any special guests or presentations on the agenda, so we'll go...
We do.
We do.
It's under new business.
Is that coming up right now?
No, it's under...
No, that's under new business, correct, Erin? Okay, so we'll go to staff reports. Chief Tucker.
Got it. Showed a couple of you in our office space. We've got that little bit of construction just about done. Nathan and Kevin did a bang-up job getting that taken care of, and we're going to assume we move into that office space here real quick. Hiring status, we've got Officer Lowe is still scheduled to go to the equivalency academy on the 22nd, but we've got him out working the road with his field training officer. He's already got experience, and we've had him do about all the office stuff that he can stand, and now he's out in the car with one of his field training officers. Hopefully, he'll have about a third or half of his field training done before he even goes to the equivalency academy down in Burien here at the end of this month. We're looking at, we're still, have one slot open to hire another officer, but we're not looking at an academy date until June. They've pushed the academy dates back, so we're a little bit delayed in that. And you may notice some of us are wearing the black bands on our badges right now for Deputy McCartney down in Pierce County that was killed the other day. So keep them and their agencies, families, and all that in your mind if you would. Appreciate it, and that's all I have to offer.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Klinger?
Just a couple of small items. We've got, the urine stats should be in your packet. If you've got any questions after looking at those, I'd be happy to answer them or make sure you can actually help answer them also. And you may see us moving around in the blue ambulance for a little bit. We blew out the inverter in the one we currently use here out of Station One, so we've got the Bron, the manufacturer's come up to do some repairs, so we're going to be borrowing the CVA, it's an ambulance, the blue one. So if you see that running around town, that's with our people in it, that's why. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Chief. John?
All right, so the planning commission's going to be continuing work on the parks and rec element of the comprehensive plan next week and potentially wrapping up the comprehensive plan items for 2017. I know it's 2018, but that's how these things go. And then if they do make any final recommendations, the entire 2017 docket will come to the city council in the next month or so to, for the council's consideration. Aside from that, lots of projects going on. I'm not going to get into the details about that tonight. Got a lot on the agenda. One other thing going on of note is there's the annexation that was requested in the north end of town. I've been trying to reach out to property owners adjacent to that to see if they're interested in joining at the same time so we can get it all done at once instead of doing an annexation and then going through an annexation process at least and then hearing from other property owners that they wanted to be part of it. So I'm trying to be proactive on that. It is difficult to get in touch with property owners on land use issues during the holidays, though, so it's been moving slowly, and I apologize if you've been anxiously waiting for that information on the annexation. We're working on it, and we work with property owners. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, John. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Engineering staff has been busy the last few hours interviewing the first set of consultants for the TIB-funded projects that we have planned for this summer. On your day is tonight as late material request. The interviews we did today for the sidewalk project on SR-20 from Township to Fruitdale, we interviewed four consultants. We'll have a final selection first thing in the morning, and we'll be notifying them and beginning the negotiation process. What that entails is we will negotiate a scope of work and a contract and a budget estimate for that work. What I'm asking for your permission to do tonight is to move ahead after we've completed those negotiations, assuming we're successful in staying within the budget that I've listed in the memo of $79,000, is to go ahead and award that contract to the selected consultant subject to your ratification at the council meeting on the 24th. The reason I ask for that somewhat unusual move, this particular project needs to be under design as quickly as possible in order to meet the schedule for DOT's parallel project that will be advertising for bids in February to overlay SR-20 from Highway 9 South to Fruitdale. We want to get this project designed and able to coordinate properly with their project so we don't have to either tear out work that they've done or they subsequently tear out work that we've done. So we want to get it done as quickly as we can to meet that goal of staff. Allowing me to award that sooner than the 24th will gain us a couple of weeks in that process. And also, I'll be away on vacation for the 24th as well, so this will just give us the ability, assuming we can successfully negotiate this, to move that forward. So you have a motion on the second page of my memorandum, and if you're amenable to that, I would ask that you so move. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Can we act on that now?
I think we can.
Do we wish to discuss this? Have any questions for Mark?
I just want to make a comment that I think it's actually fantastic here that 10,000 of that, well, it would be more, it'd be 10,000 more if it were not for the city staff that's going to cover that, so it's great.
Yeah, yeah, that is wonderful. Okay, would somebody like to make a motion? I have moved to authorize Public Works Director Mark Freiberg to award contract number 2018 PS-11 for the design phase services for the SR-20 East Lane Widening and Sidewalk Project to the selected consultant with ratification to follow at the July 24, 2018 council meeting for a cost not to exceed $7,900. Revisit that number? $79,000, pardon me. Okay. Do we have a second? Three decimals in the wrong place. Okay. We have a motion to move forward by Councilmember Judith Dunley and a second by Councilmember Chuck Owen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries?
Thank you. The only other thing, if you've noticed any big puffs of steam around town that looks sort of like a fire over the last week, we have our, Debbie has our annual cured-in-place pipe project underway, and due to the temperatures, we've had some pretty good-sized steam clouds that have come up, and I believe the fire department's even been called out twice on that. So that is happening around town, but that is providing rehabilitation for quite a few thousand feet of our sewer mains that will allow us to get another 80 years or so of service out of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Erin?
Just a couple items tonight. The city is now the proud owner of the property located at 100 West State Street, the home of the future library as of today. We're busy working on our legislative request and working with the design team to kind of get that process started. So next steps for the council will be, you'll see a contract with the design team actually kicking off the full design, which I don't anticipate to occur early before March, so we'll probably get that ready between now and then. And the public library staff are busy working on the transition. There's quite a lot of work happening there in terms of making space and moving things around and just getting ready for the joint operations, the consolidation with the district operating a library starting on February 19th. So lots of work in the library front. Otherwise, I've been mostly busy working on some of the transition-type issues that you all are resolving tonight, and I know the former mayor, Senator Wagner, Wagner was thinking about all of you tonight, but busy down in Olympia. I talked to him. He only had a chance to eat an apple yesterday between the morning and about 7:30 at night. Realized that they might have to actually schedule times to take food in in order to keep the ball rolling, so I've been having a good time there and learning a lot and thinking about Cedar Wully. So that's all for me.
Thank you, Erin. Patsy?
The city reports financially on a calendar year and is a cash basis reporter. One oddity in the cash basis requirements is that per state law, the expenses must be kept open until the 20th day of January instead of the normal December 31st that you think of. So tonight's payables, we're all 2017 expenditures, and then next council meeting, you'll see some 17, some 2018, and we won't be able to wrap the year up until sometime next month.
Thank you, Patsy. Judith?
I don't have anything very much, but I've come to a decision I'd like to remove my name from nomination so we can acclaim unanimously.
All right, we'll get to that down the road here. Thank you for your interest.
Just a few things. Last weekend, I went to the Eagle Festival and kind of participated in it up in Marble Mount. It was really great, so I just wanted to remind, I didn't see a whole lot of people from, you know, locally up there, but anyway, it was really wonderful, and the last weekend is like the most exciting in my opinion. They do the Raptor show, or I think they usually do it at Concrete High School. I didn't look to see where they were doing it this year, but usually it's there. But all, you know, every weekend, the rest of this month, and they're all hanging out up in Marble Mount, so. So that and Denny Ingberg, tickets are $10, and I know that I dropped off a donation at Little Auto Sales if you're interested in getting something in for one of the prizes. That's on the 27th at the Community Center, I believe, right? $10, and they're asking people to get those tickets in advance this year. Another thing was Tuesday, the 16th, there's a workshop on the Stillhead Proposal. That's at 6:00 to 8:00 at the Community Center here in Cedar Wully. That's it.
Thank you, Jermaine. Julia?
I just want to say congratulations to the city. I was reading here earlier today that we are now part of the Washington State Main Street program, so it sounds like it has opportunity for us to learn about revitalization, correct? Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
So we're currently an affiliate of Main Streets, so we're in, I guess I would call it Phase 1, which is the formation of a Main Streets Committee, and we've got a group of folks downtown who are interested in making that happen. So the next step will be the establishment of an independent entity to be our Main Streets organization. So under the Main Streets umbrella, it can't be the city or the chamber, so the two most likely entities to sort of host that can't be that. But I do believe the city will receive a request to help front-load the funding of the Main Streets program as a way to jump-start the downtown revitalization under that new rubric. And then the ongoing funding, what's interesting about Main Streets is there's the ability for entities like Putra Sound Energy, the city of Cedar Wully, really any entity that pays utility tax, B&amp;O tax to the state can donate to Main Streets and get, what is it, 75%? I think it's a 75% credit the following year. So your $100 only costs you $25, but you have to carry that from year to year. So there's a pretty huge advantage. Main Streets requires a staff member and is really, really laser-focused in the downtown core, so I'm excited to...
Yeah.
We've been talking for, it seems like, year after year, decade after decade, and this is one of the first sort of new, I don't want to say it's a new idea because it's not a new idea, but it's a new initiative for us to try to kick something off with a group of people who would be energized and focused on that sole mission of downtown Cedar Wully.
Great, thank you, Erin.
I have a question. I was curious, how long, do you know how long that Main Street program has been going on?
Oh, has it been about 30 years?
I think it's about 80. Originally, when our state was not counted, they actually were the national, the H3 project in our state, so they weren't... Anyway, there were three, something down there, and...
Oh, yeah.
...and two. Learned a lot from it, and found it was a good position. We just had a mission...
Thank you. Anything else, Julia?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, Chuck?
Yeah, I just want to thank Judith for considering the office of mayor, and I wanted to know that I think she's well-qualified, and it's her decision to remove her name, that's It's nice to see a crowd here like this tonight. It's too bad it ain't that way ever council meeting, but it's nice to see you people, except for Rick Limbly, I'm sitting out there. And I want Mark to know there's going to be a lot of happy people about that Fruitdale Road because we, I get calls all the time about that, people that's, ain't get through, you know, without going all the way around, so that's a good thing. So anyway, thank all you people for coming, and that's all I have to say.
All right, Carl?
I also was pleased to read about the happenings on Fruitdale. Did I read that correct, Mark, that there was going to be publicly sourced fiber optics laid in that trench while we do that work at the same time?
We're discussing that with the board now. It isn't certain, but that's where it's leaning.
That's exciting news. I just wanted to highlight that yesterday was National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and that I would like to say that I appreciate Cedar Wully's finest in our law enforcement. Thank you. And then finally, we have a three-day weekend coming up to honor Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and it's not a day off, but a day of service, so I would encourage folks to find a community project, either through your place of worship or service club, or even just with your family adopting a street. And it's a way to bring honor to that memory and also to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Jared?
I guess I'll have to get used to going last and everyone saying what you hope to say. I do want to say a lot of people in the community are excited about the Fruitdale Road improvement. I'd also wanted to thank our outstanding law enforcement for the job that they do here in the city. Just a couple housekeeping things, just so the council's aware, starting January 22nd for two weeks, I'll be in Spokane for training, so I'll miss our meeting on the 24th. So if we can figure out via phone if that's appropriate or whatever we can put in place, I'm available during the time period, but will be out of the area. I'm attending actually the same class that Officer Lowe's going to be attending, but he got lucky and got put in the Burien class, and I'm getting shipped over to Spokane for two weeks, so lucky me. I wanted to just, I guess, ask, I'm not sure if it's, would be the city's responsibility or if it would be the state, the roundabout at West Schwab, substantial chuckles in, so if you're traveling from west to east on the, basically where the fog line would be or the apron of the road, there's substantial chuckles there. So I don't know if it's something that's already been taken care of, but something to look at.
It is the state's responsibility that we will follow up on that.
Let's get the state out here to fix it.
Yeah, they have been no trouble.
And actually, all of Highway 20, from where they finished their project last year to the city limits, will be paved this year, so, you know, get ready for some definite delays. Highway 20 from, essentially, what's that, SR-9 South all the way to city limits will be paved. SR-9 North from Highway 20 to city limits will be paved, and then SR-9 South from Highway 20 to, I think almost all the way to Clear Lake, will be given a chip seal treatment, and there'll be a new roundabout added at Francis Road. So, you know, it's going to be busy, and we will have some nice new lanes when it's all done.
Thank you, Barker.
All right, thank you, Jared. I just want to say today that although the city is going through a great deal of transition right now, it's all positive. We're very fortunate to have Senator Wagner elected to Senate and representing our area, and the city of Cedar Wully, although it's going through transition, is also going through a time of unity right now, so the public can stay assured and the staff can stay assured that things will continue on on the path that we're currently continuing on. The council has no desire to turn things upside down just because we are appointing a new mayor, so. With that, I would like to invite public comment time. Anyone with public comment, please approach the podium and state your name and address, please.
My name is Manuel Reta, R-E-T-A. My address is 2432 Fieldview Drive, Ferndale, Washington. I am a host on the KSVR here in Skagit Valley. I've been a host for the last three years, but have been quite involved here in the community. I used to live in Cedar Wully before I got drafted, but anyway, I consider Wully my home because I do live in Ferndale, but this is a special place for me. Today, I would like to ask for your help in the way that I would like to do some events here in Cedar Wully. I started Northwest Washington Hispanic Chamber of Commerce about 18 years, actually, yeah, about 18 years, and during that time, I have physicist Patrice in Ferndale, which is basically Independence Day, what it is is Hispanic Heritage Month, not to be confused with Cinco de Mayo, okay? So let there's a little confusion, so just to clarify explicitly what it is. I would like to possibly have Cinco de Mayo, which is the 5th of May, a parade, dancing horses, possibly from downtown going to the Wully grounds. We had that in Burlington this year for Veterans Parade, and everybody very, very positive. So these people that I have who have horses, they're special individuals and know their horses, and so I am very careful about that, so that's an absolute. The next thing that I wanted to do is around either 15 or 16 September, do a physicist Patrice again down in the Wully grounds. Did a small one about three years ago, nobody knew about it. Last year, we did one, not very big, but it was a step forward, and it was kind of one last thing that I was going to do, but we did it. So by asking is basically is I'm hoping that the council will accept to back me up, back up the Hispanic population because in reality, we don't have very many events for Hispanics. And I served six years as, I actually appointed, I was appointed Hispanic Commissioner for the city of Washington. I have contacts in Olympia all over, and I did talk to our ex-mayor this morning, he gave me a call this morning. So like I said, I do have contacts, and I also talked to Mr. Pearson also yesterday. So my intent is to be more involved, and I, you know, I like, I really enjoy the things that being said about downtown. I was involved in downtown in Ferndale, trying to do the same thing, and it's going to take a while before they get their act together there, so that is all that I have. Thank you. Any questions? Again, my name is Manuel Reta. My phone number is 360-255-1874, and thank you very much for your time.
Could you spell your last name for me, please?
R-E-T-A.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anybody else for public comment tonight? Come on up.
Ed Cugel, Father Winfidalgo. I was just, wanted to say, I wonder if it wouldn't be appropriate, I know you're going to appoint a mayor, but at our next scheduled election, if it wouldn't be appropriate if we hadn't an election for our next mayor? Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Anyone else for public comment? All right, I will close the public comment time, and we are going to move on to new business, or, no, we don't have any unfinished. Okay, on to new business. The big thing of the night, appointment of mayor.
Madam Mayor, I move to nominate Councilwoman Johnson as mayor of Cedar Wully. Second.
All right, we have Councilmember Couch. Oh, no, do we have any more nominations? Any further nominations? All right, Councilmember Couch is nominated. Councilmember Julia Johnson, Carl DeYoung has seconded that nomination. All in favor of Councilmember Johnson for mayor? Please raise your hand in favor. Any opposed? We have a full majority. I, Julia Johnson.
I, Julia Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Washington. And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the office of mayor.
And I will partially and faithfully discharge the duties of the mayor.
For the city of Cedar Wully.
For the city of Cedar Wully.
Skagit County, Washington.
Skagit County, Washington.
According to law, to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to law and the best of my ability and understanding.
[applause]
I am honored by your support, and we have worked in a fabulous way over the last two years, and I'm looking forward to working with both Councilman DeYoung and Councilman Couch. And I'm looking forward to working with the staff, so, gosh, I'm at a loss for words. But I'm excited to be doing this, and I hope that I bring honor to the city, and I hope that I'm able to provide the city with what it needs at this time. Thank you. So, moving on. We are... We're in new business. We are, that's right, we're in new business, and the Cedar Wully School District propositions, and I believe, Mr. Brockman, you're gonna be...
Looking forward to working with you in the school district. We have great relationship with each other, I think you can hear me okay? And we do a lot of projects together. So, I'm here to talk a little bit about the levy and the bond that we are proposing in February, for February 13th. Thank you, Aaron. For the February 13th ballot. And I did provide two, this is a paper for you to look at, one's a levy and one's the bond. And I have a short PowerPoint, I won't take too long, 'cause I know you have lots of business here. But if you look to your left here, and see if this clipper works, and it does, we have four pillars that we believe in, and that's great teachers, great staff in our classrooms. They're the number one, and they're most important. They work for their kids every day in their classrooms. Great administrators, and most of this includes our school principals. We, our school principals are instructional leaders, they're leading instruction in their schools, working with those teachers, giving teachers feedback on how they are working with kids in the classroom. Been working out very well, we have Schools of Distinction, Washington Achievement Schools, I'll talk a little bit more about that, but we're on a roll, we're doing really well. The third piece to this is, third number three, district offices supporting schools. If you, we don't have a great relationship with the district office in our schools, we're not on the same page. We're on the same page, and especially our budget office, because we go to Brett Greenwood, our executive director of Budget and Operations, and say, Brett, can we do this? And he'll say, I think we can, yes, with a little nudging sometimes. And it goes all the way back to the day I walked in the school district almost five years ago in July, where I asked him, can we go to fold AK? And he looked at his budget, and he came back, he says, we can do it. So, we went to fold AK before the state even funded us for that. Then the last piece is the relationships we have with our family and communities. It's important that we have strong, positive relationships with our community, because when we do work together, we do make a difference, and it benefits all of our kids. I want to talk a little bit about some of the highlights that we have had the last couple of years, three or four years, Schools of Distinction, Washington Achievement Schools, Lyman Elementary, Clear Lake, Big Lake, Central Elementary, the high school. These are schools that are in the top 5% of our state, that are either improving academically or sustaining academic growth. It's a huge win for us, we're one of the only school districts north of Snohomish County getting these awards at this time, and we have several schools that are right on the edge of getting there. Like I said, we've, have one-to-one computing now, elementary music and art in our schools with lower class sizes, we've added 30 minutes to the school day, classroom libraries, school libraries, just getting those, bolstering those libraries up and for benefit of our kids for our level reading, fold AK I mentioned. I wanted to mention the safety and technology levy, we are sunsetting that safety and technology levy after this year. That's, we've put all the cameras and buzzers and one-to-one computing and technology in all of our schools. So, it's been a huge win for us, we've been leading the county in that, and expanded school support in both our English language learners and our special education program. So, we're just doing a lot of work right now, and it's building and continuing to build. Our state is almost fully funding our schools, and that's what I want to talk a little bit about with the levy and the bond. So, we have an inside partner down there, Senator Wagner, that's, I think, may be helpful to us. So, the first thing I want to talk about around the proposition is the levy. So, this is, it's not a new levy, it's a renewal levy, it's a replacement levy. The state hasn't quite gotten there to fully fund education. This is about 25% of our operational budget, defense and supplement special education, music and art, lower class sizes, those are the big three. And you can see on the pie chart there that, what we've been doing. There's a little caveat to this, it's not only a renewal and replacement levy, but it's also gonna be a levy where we're gonna have to reduce the cost over the next, after the state legislature gets and finishes up their session. They're working on further funding special ed salaries, and those are the pieces that are gonna come back to our school district. What we can't do is go out for a smaller levy at this time, it'd be $1.50 per thousand, because we're not sure what they're going to do in this legislative session. The 45th district flip, when they have the Democrats in the senate, the house, and at the governor's office, there's gonna be some changes. So, in order for us to cover our current operating costs, we needed to go out for the replacement levy, and then we'll repeal it back. Then the second piece I want to talk a little bit about is our bond, this is, we're really excited about that. We're asking for our citizens for a $79.5 million bond. Number one on the bond list is Evergreen Elementary. I know a lot of you've been through Evergreen Elementary, maybe were students in Evergreen Elementary. It was built in 1974 as an open concept school. Open concept didn't work. And the reason it didn't work, because there were no walls. And immediately after the first couple of years, the teachers and educators figured this out, so they started moving walls in, bookshelves, anything they can to separate themselves from other classrooms. It was just too noisy and distracting. So, and that's what Evergreen Elementary was. We couldn't fake walls throughout the years, you walked in one classroom, you walk in, open the door into another classroom, and open the door, you might even go outside. So, Evergreen Elementary, it's 580 kids, has a full continuum of special education services and ELL services, but it's not conducive for teaching. So, the time is now to take a look at that and see if we can build a new Evergreen Elementary, we'd build it on the other side of the field, closer to the bus lane that goes out to Highway 20. Number two on the list is, we have lots of facilities work. We have riffs and boilers and windows and sidewalks and ADA compliance that just need to be fixed, and $12 million worth, it takes, it's gonna cost us a million dollars just to replace the riff on the high school. 1.2 million to replace the boiler at the high school, it was built in 1952, that's when it was installed, and I checked with our director of facilities, that he can't find parts right now unless he goes on eBay. But, anyway, we need that, of course. We're a growing district, we've grown about 250 students in the last three years, we need more classroom space, we're gonna add classroom space. Our gymnasiums in our elementary, five of our elementary schools are doubling up as cafeterias, and they're not even real gymnasiums. They have wood floors, but the size is too small, we're running out of space. We can use new gymnasiums, they'll be a little bit bigger size, we can use them all day, instead of but doubling up for cafeterias. And we can use that cafeteria and other spaces for small group instructions for special education, learning assistant programs, title ed, special ed programs. So, that's, those are the highlights for the levy and the bond. I didn't want to take a whole lot of time, I know you have a lot of business to attend to, but we do have great relationships with the city, and we talk with Aaron and the mayor and the staff, your staff, monthly, and we talk about how we can work together for the benefit of not only our students, but for the community as a whole, so I thank you for that. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
All right, so, lots of great project lists on here. Do we have an idea of a concept of how many work hours we're looking at locally?
There's about 54,000 work hours, and that's a lot of work, especially for our small works projects, so riffing, siding, windows, painting, sidewalks. We foresee a lot of our local employees or local construction companies working on those projects.
Well, that's good to hear, because I'd be excited to see local hire from within the community, from someone who'd be able to graduate with, from Cedar Wully High School, to be able to get into a pre-apprenticeship program, into apprenticeship program, and possibly journey out just by building the new school.
Absolutely.
And then having that too for filling the skills gap that we're looking for in this region, and getting onto a living wage.
Absolutely.
And I think this is a great way of doing that locally, because people know where to spend their money locally, when they're working locally, and it relieves stress off of our roads. Because as you know, traffic is a family value, the more time you're in traffic, the less time you have with your family. So, I'd be interested in hearing more about the hours that are being put forth there. I'm interested in what your plan is with the local hire and apprenticeship utilization. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Any other questions?
I actually had a couple. Actually have a student that goes to Evergreen Elementary, and my experience is, I have to walk through another classroom to get to her classroom, which is disruptive to that first classroom, and then there's a door to go right outside from there. So, that's a safety concern, in my opinion, and I believe that they have to stay unlocked, is that right?
I do.
Yeah, so, that's a huge safety concern. And I was wondering what your priority list is, you have a priority list, like what's, you know?
Yeah, the priority is Evergreen Elementary, that's number one. It's preservation number two, and then building up classroom additions number three, and the gymnasiums number four. And then whatever falls in line after that, we'll get. So, Evergreen number one.
Thank you.
Every school gets something.
Phil, I had one question. I just want to say outstanding work by you and the school board. I'm seeing a lot of, a lot of signs, a lot of, hearing a lot of positive support, and I think it helps the education that you guys have done, people see where the money's gonna be going. I did have one question, just, I went through the Cedar Wully School District, and when I was in high school, did some workout at Clear Lake Elementary. Where does, maybe, you know, down the road, does Clear Lake fit into getting some work? Because I know that that's a school that's gonna need attention along with Evergreen.
Clear Lake is a dilemma. It's in a flood zone, so it's trying to get permitting, and for new building there is very difficult. We barely got a permit to put that new portable in this last year, that's a double wide portable that we put in. We'll work on the facilities, the roofs, the siding, and windows, we'll do all of that work. But whenever you float a bond out there and it passes, land acquisition is always on the list. Land acquisition is on the list for Clear Lake. We need to find some property to build a school out of the flood zone for our future. Clear Lake has over 300 students there, has the combined program of Clear Lake students there, as well as the Visions program. We do not anticipate moving the Vision programs out of there, it provides relief to our other in-town elementary schools, which are full. We've added portables to all of those schools at this time, so I hope that answers your question. We do, we'll pull out a trailer, I don't know if you remember the old trailer back there, we're gonna pull that trailer out, we put a new double wide in there for two classrooms, and then try to put a covered play area there to help mitigate some of the things at Clear Lake. But it's a great school, it's a school of distinction, it's Washington achievement school, Dina Fox and the staff are doing a great job down there, we need to do something to help and support them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it? Any other questions?
Just one thing, I know I'm talking twice, I apologize. Is there a way that we could encourage the superintendent to acknowledge the school board members that are in attendance tonight?
Sure.
We do. We have Brad New, Eric Johnson, up there. Eric, you can stand up and wave, it's okay.
[applause]
And former Tim Howland is here, he was also a levy volunteer. Is anybody else here that is a school director that I don't know of? Sometimes that happens. Councilmember DeYoung, I do have to comment, were you a student at South Shore Elementary in Seattle?
Yes, which was an open concept.
Were you there during open concept school? How did you like it then?
Well, I think it's apples and oranges, because that's a different age group, as middle school versus what we're talking about with the elementary school. And, you know, it did get a little loud, and there were some chaotic moments, but I benefited from the experience.
Yeah, my Rayner Beach days, I think I was called up to settle things down a few times.
Yes.
Just in history. Do we have other questions?
Well, thank you, thank you for coming and presenting.
Thank you very much.
So, now we are going to move on to appointing mayor pro-tam.
Well, Madam Mayor, if the council is interested in potentially weighing in on these propositions, we need to first make sure we open the door to any public comments, pro and against.
All right, so is there...
Same with council comments, pro and against.
Is there, is there public comment regarding the propositions that were presented?
Ed Cugel, Father One Fidalgo. We all want great schools, we all want great schools for children, excuse me. This man...
Yeah, I got some water here for you.
Well, we all want great schools, but this bond won't provide them. Even with the huge cost of nearly $80 million, costing $150 million, including interest, over 20 years. That's a 35% increase in local school property taxes, which homeowners will pay directly and renters indirectly. It'll be a major hardship for many, but especially for the 50% of our children and families needing help for school lunches. It's not all about kids, with higher taxes forcing them to move away. The school district says the bond will replace one elementary school and pay for other smaller projects. And the district didn't ask our community at large what we'd like for our schools, but the one survey they did, said that the thing that people are most concerned about is classroom size. This bond only adds a few hundred students district-wide, even with the replacement school, leaving no room for growth or reduction in class size. Repair projects could be funded with a pay-as-you-go levy, instead of a bond saving us tens of millions of dollars in interest. Other projects rather than needs, including a $600 broadcast room at the high school, even if we want, is on their list. They may not get done built, because they can cut whatever they want. I vote no on this bond, because, I'm major, I vote no on this bond, because it would cause a major, major financial hardship for many who are planning for growth and continued safety, confident in our schools. And on the levy, the levy is a 50% increase of our local school property taxes. The district wants more money, even though the state is gonna provide money. The district claims there's uncertainty, so we need the money, that no other local district is asking for this much. The district is not required to reduce the levy if they get the money from the state. Vote no, ask for more money than you need. Increase in the bond or tax... And with, uh, increase in the bond, our taxes are going to go up 25%. Many of us can't afford this launch of tax increase. By asking for it, the district is hurting the possibility and driving away the very families who children were supporting, who are supposed to be serving. I think the taxes shouldn't go up more than the cost of living. Excuse my hoarse voice and thank you.
Right. Yes? And for the record, please state your name and address. Thank you.
So my name is Kathy Ream and I live at 23262 Meadowview Lane in the Cedar Willy School District. And I had the privilege of serving as a teacher in the Cedar Willy Schools for 30 years. I was actually present when the designs for Evergreen were first laid out. And I remember vividly that there was a great deal of controversy about building that school. And then I had, um, the, I guess to be honest, misfortune of teaching there for a year. I was involuntarily transferred to Evergreen. I spent most of that year drawing the design for the walls. And at the end of the year, the other staff gave me the Frank Lloyd Wright Award. So a great many stories about Evergreen and the decision that was made there that was not in the best interest ultimately. And when we decided to take it away, I planned to bring, um, uh, some Martinello's and celebrate. So I would say to you that the other side of this is that this district has done a brilliant job of taking care of its other schools. I am so proud of the work that was done at Central because I also go back far enough to remember when Central was closed and when we didn't know what was going to happen to that building and then we brought it back and turned it into a beautiful facility. And I was teaching at Cedar Willy High School when we passed the bond, when we rebuilt the, um, the beautiful theater and when we turned that school into something that I am always proud to walk through and to invite people. I have absolute confidence in our current school board and decisions they're making and I have confidence in our community. And I think that this is an exciting time and I absolutely urge people to support this effort, this bond, and I hope I get invited to go out and talk to other groups because I have more funny stories about teaching at Evergreen.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Tim Holland, 26203 Mankin Road. And, uh, there is some information that Phil gave you that this was going to provide 54,000 hours of work. That's actually incorrect, sorry. It's, it's more like around 300,000. Carl might remember the exact number that I gave him, but it will provide approximately 100 jobs for three years. That's a lot of work. And the school board has always highly promoted trying to keep local contractors to do that work so that that money that comes from the community goes back to the community. And actually, I got here late because I was at a, a labor meeting, which Carl hopefully knows. But anyway, we were talking about these very issues, trying to keep that money in the community in different ways so we can do that. There were some other numbers given here opposing the bond that are not correct and I'd be happy to go over that with anybody that really wants to deal with that. We can't be exact on this. We do not know what the state is going to do. We do know that we will get state match dollars, which the school board, that's going to be approximately 6 million, which the school board has said, "We'll go to repay that bond when we get it." Actually, it won't go quite that way, but we never will actually get the 79.5 million. We will never take out that entire loan because some of that will be replaced by the money that we get from the state. And the levy is very complicated at this point. We just don't know what's going to happen with that, but the numbers that we're giving on these sheets, it's very unlikely we'll ever collect that amount of money. It will be lower than that. And in closing, all I have to say is vote yes for schools and I would hope that the council, I'd like the city council, if possible, to endorse this project. I think it will be very good for the whole community in many, many ways.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Dr. Holland, you're on the, the political side of the, of, of the bond, correct?
Of the bond.
You're, you're part of the chair, co-chair of the political committee for the-
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, um, would Cedar Willy be the only, uh, organization, entity, uh, that would be solely endorsing this bond?
No.
What other, what other endorsement?
Uh, well, there's lots of individuals. Cheers to that. And yourself, but, uh, and I'll probably get the mayor to endorse this too at some point, but anyway. Uh, many individuals, the Skagit Democrats have endorsed it and the group that I went to tonight will probably endorse it and I don't remember their name, but-
Uh, I might be able to help with that.
Yeah, I think so.
Northwest Central Labor Council AFL-CIO, which represents Skagit County, Island County, and Skagit County.
And, uh, the meeting tonight, they had, as far as I could tell, virtually every president of every union in that area there tonight, and they were very interested in this project. They support education, they support, uh, the idea of keeping jobs local and, uh, and I'm sure they're going to support this. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to give a comment? All right. So now we will move on to Mayor Pro-Tam, the appointment of Mayor Pro-Tam. Brenda has been doing a fabulous job the last two years. I will entertain any nominations.
Before you move on, did the council wish to take action on-
Well, I think that we should actually voice our support for the, um-
Oh, okay.
-the bond, uh, if that is how we feel about it.
Is there any discussion regarding it?
No.
I haven't made a- That's why we have to support our kids. Yeah.
So we're going to need a motion. Do we have, uh, something before us that we can move?
Yeah, the council packet has a proposed, or a range of possible motions on page 155.
Thank you.
And there'd be two separate motions, one for proposition one, one for proposition two, 155.
Okay.
Thank you, Aaron.
So do I hear a motion for proposition?
That's hilarious.
Motion to support or oppose the Cedar Willy School District, number 101, Proposition One, General Obligation Bond for 79,500?
Million.
A million? Sorry. Yes. That would be nice to have 75,000, wouldn't it?
I was on my, my gavel there. I had three more zeros.
Yeah, they're lacking three zeros, yeah.
Well, there's a magnitude there. Uh, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that Cedar, uh, City of Cedar Willy endorses Cedar Willy School District, number 101's propositions. Proposition one, general obligation bonds, 79,500,000. Proposition two, replacement education programs and operations levy. Thank you. I second.
Okay, we've, um, we have a motion by, um, Councilman DeYoung and seconded by Councilman Couch. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, motion carries. So moving on to the second motion. Do I hear?
We'll see.
Did you do both at the same time?
He did. He did both.
I think they called in, um-
Okay. So we can move on now to Mayor Pro-Tam. I've been trying to get there. I've been trying to get there.
What did you, what did you say?
That I've been trying to get there.
Yeah.
All right. So I will entertain any nominations?
Yeah, I'd like to make a nomination that we change the guard and, and make Judith Dunley, Mayor Pro-Tam.
All right. So do we take other motions like we do with the mayor? So is there anybody else that you'd like to make a motion?
I nominate Jermaine Cornigay.
So we have two candidates, possible candidates for Mayor Pro-Tam. Um, so we, so where would I move with this? So I, we've never done this before.
Yeah, so a little different than our normal process, which is fine. So I, I think what you would do is just to take a vote, uh, well, it would be good to have these nominations seconded or, uh, I think that'd be helpful to get them all rolling. And then if you've got two nominations that are seconded and, um, much like the mayor appointment process from the new policy, you would just call for all in favor of nominee council member whichever, and then all in favor of nominee the other council member. And, uh, in this case, we're looking for a majority of the council or if there happens to be a three to three vote, then, um, you will be able to cast the tie-breaking vote.
All right. So we'll just back up here a bit. So we had a motion by Councilman Owen to nominate councilman, councilwoman Judith Dunley. Do I have a second?
Second.
It was seconded by, um, Councilwoman Kinzer. And we had a motion by Councilman DeYoung to nominate Councilwoman Jermaine Cornigay.
Second.
And we had a second by Jared. Okay. So, um-
Put it to a vote.
Yeah, let's put it to a vote. So, uh, those in favor of, um, voting for, those in favor of Councilman, okay, oh wow. So those in favor of Councilwoman Judith Dunley. Do I hear a vote? Show of hands? Let's do a show of hands.
Show of hands.
So we have three. And those opposed?
No.
I don't think you would go oppose.
Don't go oppose. You just voted.
Those in favor of, uh, Councilmember Cornigay.
And then those for, um, Councilwoman Jermaine Cornigay? Also three? So, okay.
You're the tiebreaker.
You don't duck this one. Wow. Okay.
Bang, right out of the gate.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I guess, um, my vote will go to Jermaine Cornigay, Councilwoman Jermaine Cornigay.
Thank you.
So, okay, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro-Tam Jermaine Cornigay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Great job. Thank you.
All right. So we have informational items. Um, you already mentioned the, um, fire report, did you not, chief? All right, so. So is there anything for the good of the order?
Yep, um, item on page 179, the council's organizational matters, agenda item M3. I have a feeling our meetings might become quicker. Since you keep jumping to the next item. So page 179, city council organizational matters. This is your annual review of proposed committee assignments, uh, the mission, vision, and goals, question for the council about a possible retreat, and then the city calendar.
So are there any questions for, um, Mr. Berg regarding the agenda? The organizational matters, I'll say.
Well, actually, don't we have a little problem in that the committee assignments include the mayor?
Yeah, we'll have to, uh, I guess what I would recommend is that you would sub out the, uh, future newly appointed council member for the mayor, but the council certainly is free to make any changes that it sees fit. Uh, these were the appointments or recommendations made by Mayor Waggoner before he zipped off to Olympia.
Mm-hmm. So has it ever happened where the mayor stepped in until that appointment happened or?
Well, the mayor generally participates in any or all council committees that he or she wants to participate in. So in this case, I would consider, um, anything with, uh, former council member Johnson's name as a vacancy on the committee list.
Are there, are there any other questions regarding?
We'd like ourselves into your spots.
Yeah, I would, uh, I would like to recommend, you know, that we have the retreat again this year. I think they're very productive and we have a chance to talk and bring things up, so I would recommend we, we have the retreat again this year.
Yes. I thought that was very helpful when I came on, so.
Maybe get the new council member appointed and then schedule one after that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Uh, Aaron, since you mentioned it, what kind of timeline are we looking at or what have you seen in the past for, uh, filling the vacancy?
And so this will be the first time that the council vacancy will be filled under the new council procedures. Uh, I believe it will take approximately six weeks, um, just depending on the way the schedule falls, but that will begin with a notice issued by the city clerk by the end of this week. There'll be a notice issued announcing the vacancy. That'll be published twice over the course of two weeks and then, uh, the process will include, the city will receive any interested applicants for the position and at a following meeting, I, I think the calendar works out that it will happen probably at your, either your February study session or your February regular meeting. The city council would narrow down the list of applicants and determine who the council would like to interview. And then at the following meeting, the council would interview those applicants in public session, have the ability to adjourn to executive session to discuss the qualifications of those candidates for appointed, appointment to elective office and then come out of executive session at the regular meeting, so much like we did tonight, a six o'clock, uh, special, and then come out at the regular meeting, make the appointment, that council member then would be sworn in and take their seat at that time. So I think it may be the second meeting in February would be the likely time for that appointment to take place. So we might aim for a retreat, maybe fairly early in March, if we could pull that off. That way we, we, it doesn't drag on too far into the calendar year and we can make the most of the retreat in terms of setting the direction for staff work.
Sounds like the plan.
And maybe we'll aim for, um, you know, on Monday, since I know, uh, that's always the challenge then is fitting everyone's schedule, so, you know, pick a day of the week that gets most people, so we avoid work schedules and figure out the location and all of that. So we'll get working on that part.
I just have a note. Um, I just was looking at the schedule for the year and on, uh, February 14th, I will not be here.
All right. All right.
Flash Wednesday.
Duly noted. Um, Council, Councilwoman Kinzer, you had a question? You, oh, I thought you started, uh, okay.
No.
So, um, I actually have a comment regarding the, um, organizational matters. I think it's nice that we have, um, now that we have two new council members on, it'd be nice if we could kind of review what maybe the goals and the agendas are. So that would be great, that they could give their input and we could reevaluate them. Maybe go into a retreat. Yeah.
Yeah. And so what we can do, uh, you know, off on the retreat, we've done, uh, kind of the quick presentations from various departments to orient the council to what they see is, you know, both what's going on, but what they see as the upcoming issues and, and get that out of the way in the morning and then set the afternoon for council discussion that really culminates in a reprioritization of, of goals. So then we set to work on developing our, you know, 2018 work program, you know, potentially amending the budget, uh, whatever is necessary to try to execute those goals. Um, yeah, so it's a, it's kind of a fun and exciting process and it's definitely helpful from my perspective on the staff side that we know we're marching in the direction that the city council has set.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions regarding that?
Madam Mayor, I- Madam Mayor, I have one under committee assignments. I just wondered, this was a recommendation of Mayor Wagner prior to leaving office, but I didn't know if the changes we'll need to make for your vacant spots or if you'd rather just look at reviewing this completely or how you feel about the committee assignments.
Well, I'd like to hear what Mayor Wagner had to say, former mayor Wagner had to say, yeah, regarding...
Yeah, I just didn't know if you would want to, if we would look at a complete revamp or how you felt about the committee assignments.
Yeah, I think that I would like to take some time, take a look at it. Thank you. All right. Anything else? Anything else for the good of the order? So we have nothing more except to adjourn. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And so moved. All right. We're adjourned.